The meeting of November 4th for the Board of Selectmen in Harwich. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here for a weekly briefing? Carolyn, would you like to say something at weekly briefing? I thought you would, that's why.
I just wanted to say thank you to the community for all of their support for the Halloween party. We had over 275 young children and it was a great success, so, thank you.
Any other comments for weekly briefing? We now move to public comments and announcements. Anyone for public comments and announcements? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Nancy Bates, I just had a couple of comments. I had addressed the board on the, at the October 21st meeting about the Route 124 project. Unfortunately, as you are aware, my remarks, along with those of several others, never made it to the televised portion. So, I would like this opportunity to make a few related comments on the matter. Pleasant Lake Avenue is an old rural road dating back well over 200 years. Do we really want it to look like Route 137, a thoroughfare with no character, which looks like every other suburban road? I shudder to think what might happen to this 1.2 mile stretch of road with its beautiful views of the ponds, cranberry bogs, and old houses if the proposed design goes through. Relocating the bike path onto the Long Pond beaches, erecting concrete retaining walls, removing ancient trees encroaching upon the old houses, it's a nightmare to think about. The Highway Department and the design firm had reasonable intentions for this project, but they could not have visualized the actual destructive impact on this bucolic road and its surrounding neighborhood. The $4 million of mass dot funding has way too many strings attached. I find myself wishing for a huge rainstorm so we can see the alleged flooding of the Pleasant Lake Avenue and its aftermath. I don't recall any major problems since the last reconstruction, which was 10 or 12 years ago, and I drive that road nearly every day. In conclusion, I would like to thank El Ranio, the retired head of the DPW, for coming forward at that meeting two weeks ago and volunteering his time and road expertise to find a reasonable solution. And I want to thank the board for recognizing there is a problem and for scheduling the November 18th meeting for discussion. I hope Harwich residents will find time to attend that. And in the meantime, I urge them to drive down Route 124 and to walk on the bike path and to visualize what the widening of this road by eight feet will cause to the area. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
With regard to the same subject, I just wanted to ask you folks, and I'm, you know, really pleased that you've decided to make this your sole agenda item on the November 18th meeting. I was wondering if there's going to be any additional public outreach in addition to your normal posting on the Harwich website as an agenda item?
Hadn't thought of it.
I think it'd be a great idea. I think the more the town is aware of what's proposed, the better decisions we can make.
Right.
Isn't there additional public, doesn't link, paying additional public meetings?
I can check with Mr. Hooper on what other items he intends to put in, either in the newspaper or what other. He does have a, an email list, I believe, so I'll make sure he sends it to all of those on the email list, as a minimum.
I'm sure that's not all encompassing, though.
No.
And the last time he posted something on his website, it took more than four clicks to get to it. So, it's really not user-friendly.
Okay.
So, I appreciate you taking that under advisement.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Anne Stewart, 518 Pleasant Lake Ave. I just wanted to mention that today I dropped by a DVD of an original recording by a private videotaper of the October 16th meeting, you know, dropped it off to Jamie. And she was going to check and, you know, view it herself and make sure that it was okay. It's unedited, you know, just a complete recording of about an hour and 20 minutes of the October 16th meeting with Lincoln Hooper. And I just wanted to make sure that you folks knew that and hope that that will be viewed on Channel 18 as it was unable, as Jamie was unable to record it that night because she had another work obligation. So, an independent person did a great job and it really expresses a lot of passion and involvement of the people that got up and spoke in the community. So, I think viewers would like to watch it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? That's it? All right. Can we go into the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the following consent agenda, excuse me, I can speak, consent agenda items. A, approved request by the Pleasant Lake General Store to close per liquor license regulations, section 1.19, number 4. B, approved the request for assistance from the Caleb Chase Fund. And C, accept the gift in the amount of $500 from the Cranberry Valley Men's Golf Association.
Second.
Just one comment, and that is on the request from the Pleasant Lake General Store, there are no dates on the letter. It would be helpful if we could get dates, like starting dates and ending dates, put on the letter. And since it's not a crisis of any sort, let's just hold off and get that done.
I agree, Mr. Chair. I think that we should remove item A from the consent agenda until we get the dates because it's, basically is too open-ended and it should have a, when did it close? When is it?
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. I'm just saying, I concur that I think item A.
I don't think anybody wants it.
It's not on.
Hello?
Okay.
How's that?
Much better.
Let's see, what was I saying? Oh, yes.
Dates.
Dates, that, I think that we should pull item A from the consent agenda because we have no date where it's, they're planning on closing, a date when they're planning on reopening, and I think we can't have this be this open-ended. So, would there be, the second and the first would agree to removing item A?
Sure.
Sure. Yes.
Any other further discussion on consent agenda? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We next move into public hearings and presentations. I have that for you, Peter, to read if you want.
Thank you.
There you go.
Ready for this?
Yes, please.
Okay. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 4th, 2013, now early, earlier than 7:00 PM during the regularly scheduled public meeting. The hearing will be held in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street Harwich, to the purpose of deciding whether all property shall be taxed at the same rates for fiscal year 2014 as set forth in Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Laws. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing and provide information, testimony relevant to this matter.
Thank you.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Shall move. Second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open. Mr. Scale?
Good evening, board members and town administrator. I'm Dave Scanell from the Assessors' Office. And here tonight I have Bruce Nightengale from the Board of Assessors. Bob Neese and Mr. Wastack are unable to be here this evening. But with your indulgence, I'll just go over a few things. This is your annual public hearing to see if we should tax all property at the same tax rate or shift the burden. I have some handouts for the public as well here, and we will have met our office. The town continues to be predominantly residential. We're almost 93% of the valuation of the town is residential and only about 7%, a little over 7% is commercial, industrial, and personal property. This is continuing as we usually get more residential development and that type of thing than we do commercial. So, each year it edges up a little bit, but our predominant class is residential. So, to give any relief to the residential class, you would really have to increase the tax rates on the remaining commercial properties quite substantially. And this is similar to the situation where it has been in past years, where the town historically has taxed all property at the same tax rate for that purpose. Let me just quickly go through some of the things that we've done this year. This is, we, we have our information pending with the Department of Revenue. We have not yet got it approved, so perhaps we'll have to revote this at your next meeting as well to ratify it, similar to what we did last year. But we've completed the recertification of the town, repricing of most of the properties. The value of the town has increased about $55 million from $4.4 billion to $4.5 billion, So, the market has been coming back. What the board and the Department of Revenue uses are the 2012 sales, calendar sales in this analysis, so it's not right up to date with the sales that are happening now, but does reflect what was happening in the market in 2012. And we're finding properties are increasing in value, luckily, after a long time of our evaluations going down. Basically, the value of the town is up about 1 and 1/4%, which is fairly small. The major parts of town there, for the most part, and this is generalities, but for the most part, the assessments have not really gone up or down all that much. The prime properties, south of 28 and Long Pond, and those type of properties typically lead the properties when we come out of a trough of lower values and start, start increasing. The properties that are most in demand are those types of properties. So, there are parts of town where people will see their increased assessment or whatever. It's the good news, bad news type of thing, that your property's worth more. Unfortunately, it's tied into the assessment system and the tax bills. So, with that, we'd like to mention that we do annually have exemptions for people available at the Assessors' Office for relief of their tax bills, which we would be happy to go over anyone's situation that's having trouble paying their tax bill for any reason, to see if anything we have can alleviate that. And as usual, with the quarterly bills, the time for applications for abatement are always January 1st to February 1st is the filing deadlines. And we put all the information, we'll put the sales, we'll put the new assessment records online and all that type of thing. So, no matter if you're in Florida or here, wherever, you can always file an abatement if you're aggrieved about your assessment and the Board of Assessors will take it up. So, it's, it's been quite helpful to have the website and all those forms available for the public that they can do, no matter where they are these days. So, that's working fairly well. And with that, I'll, I'll probably just leave it open for questions for the board or, or anything else you may wish.
Excuse me, Larry.
Just out of curiosity, when you talk about exemptions and abatements, can you give a rough idea of how many numbers you have of each of those? Is that a large number of activity going on for that or not many or?
Yeah, there's two different things. One, one is for abatements for appeals on the value of a property, just on the real estate itself. And we, and we get a certain number of those each year. I don't know exactly how many, 50 or 100 or something like that, that the board goes through. Sometimes there are small changes, sometimes is, there's something more that needs to be addressed. But instead of using computer models as we do to value all the property, when someone files an abatement, it kind of zooms into their one property and we take a really hard look at all the information and all the different arguments that people have. With exemptions, those are statutory from the legislature for disabled vets or sight impaired people or senior exemptions. And we typically have, I would say, around 300 or so, and we disburse, I think around a quarter of a million dollars in tax relief to the residents of the town of Harwich that qualify for those. So, it's, it's a fairly good program. We have the most generous, the town has adopted the most generous state laws that were allowed to help with people that are in that situation that, that could use some help with their tax bills. We also, just to follow up, sorry, we have a work-off program with the Council on Aging too, where they, we also have paid volunteer work that some individuals can do to further reduce their, their tax liability.
Thank you. Ed?
Last spring, at the Selectmen's Association, the assessor, deputy assessor from the town of Nantucket did a presentation and they have adopted a program, which I'm not sure if I have it right, but it's a homeowner's exemption, differentiates between homeowners. Have we ever looked into that?
We have. It's a residential exemption. We did that in about '07, I believe. Mr. Wigman, Mr. Cole, who was a member of the board at that time, I think even maybe Barry Hemian or whatever. We went through that. That is a project which can grant some tax relief to the year-round population. However, it does shift that very same burden back onto the summer population and a few. So, it has some good points and the bad points. The good point is there, there is some relief. The bad point is that it almost causes a civil war again because the summer people don't by definition have any kids in school, and that's about half the budget. They also pay a personal property tax that year-rounders do not pay. And to further go on to that, it creates a little bit of problems with all these laws. But we could always look at it again or do a more fine study of these type of things. But as a practical matter, we would, with any of these, we basically need a year's heads-up kind of thing, just to do the administrative requirements. We would have to mail out forms to everyone to see if the year-round residents, and if they can prove that they are by their latest income taxes. So, that administrative burden is not insubstantial. And should we get one of these wrong, we have to pay them in real cash that comes out of the overlay that comes out of someone's budget, basically. So...
Plus, they can't vote.
Pardon me?
They don't get to vote.
Well, yeah, the, one of the hard things too is that the summer taxpayers don't normally, they're not allowed to vote at town meeting, which further aggravates some of the conversations that we have from time to time. But I'll leave it there with, that's policy and, and that's why we're here tonight. But I hope that answers the question.
And I guess one last question. You mentioned we're down in a trough from previous years, but we're starting to climb out in the last decade. What was our high town-wide assessment?
A little heads-up would be really good for some of the, the mystery numbers of -- I'm not exactly sure. I think we've probably, we've probably dropped around, it's, it's somewhat funny, not funny, but in the early 90s, the value of the town dropped about 15% in a very quick manner. I think over the past four or five years, we've probably dropped a similar 15% over the years. Our particular sheet has, has, a couple of the years are down 6%, down 2%, down 2%, and this year basically holding even for the median value of the town. But that's a property that's only worth $320,000, the, the direct middle of all the values in town. So, that doesn't usually change that much. We are seeing on the 2013 deeds coming through that even the average property seemed to be going up in value, which is a good sign. And if we can get back to the days when the values used to go up 4%, 5%, 6% a year and not 30% a year, that was a very healthy type of economy and market going forward, which you had some appreciation but not huge appreciations. So, I hope that that returns. But we go, by state law, we're about two years behind. So, by the time these values come out January of 14, really the first deeds were coming across our desk at January of 12. So, it's not really a one-to-one relationship.
But our, our current town-wide assessment is, you say, four and a half billion?
Correct.
Had we topped out over five, over five and a half?
I think it was five plus at one time. I don't think we ever hit six, but I think it was five, five plus, five, five, or something like that.
It's awful nice to be back here again. I'm taking Richard's place. I'm sort of the rookie on this board. I was just talking to David a little while ago. Between Bob, Richard, and myself, we have about 40 years' worth of experience on the Board of Assessors. This is not a board that turns over that much. We meet just about weekly. We're active people. We certainly don't have any trouble with vacancies. We're a dedicated bunch of guys that want to do the job. So, thank you. Before you depart, we have a motion in our packet. Do you want us to make the motion and vote on it?
Yes. If, if we could vote on that motion this evening and with your approval, perhaps at the next meeting, we can ratify it in the consent agenda. And also with your approval, I will input it to the Department of Revenue on the Gateway Electronic Program for you, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Chair, will we close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair. I'd move that we select a factor of one, taxing all property at the same rate, that we do not grant an open space exemption, that we do not grant a residential exemption, and that we do not grant a small commercial exemption.
Is your second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard's not here to do real estate and open space. Is there someone who's going to deal with that for him?
Board of Assessors?
That was Board of Assessors.
Okay, so they have...
Yeah, I think I'd be happy to. Bruce, I think, mentioned some of the points that the board is meeting well and, and meeting their obligations and, and we submitted, I believe, a written report to the board and would be happy to answer any questions you might have or concerns.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Thank you. My question's...
My only question is why Richard's not here. No, I'm sorry.
I know.
He stacked up all his committee reports and, and then he, he left town, so...
Is there someone, well, thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Is there anyone from real estate and open space? He has presented information, but, okay, we'll move on then. How about the Community Preservation Committee? I see someone there. Welcome, Bob.
Good evening. My name's Bob McCready. I'm the current chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I think you, I believe you all have the report that I submitted. I will take the opportunity to make a couple of comments and then see what questions you have. They are from the report. This was another year, a little bit different than last year, but another year when we had a number of vacancies on the committee during, primarily during the summer. Both the Selectmen's seats again were vacant for a period of time. Since that time, one of them's been filled. And there was a couple of months when one or two of the committee representative seats were open. So, we actually had a, at least one monthly meeting when we were unable to get a quorum together to have a, an official meeting. So, I just wanted to make that note. There is one empty seat here, I, still from the, of the Selectmen's seats. So, anyone listening that is interested in talking to the Selectmen about that, please do. For this year, we have 12. We moved to the application deadline for CPC funds, CPA funds, up to October 1st this year. We got 12 applications that we're currently looking at. We have already had first half of the, of presentations on those this couple of weeks ago. We'll have the second half this, this coming Thursday, and that should get us ready to start having internal committee conversations on those. We, you may have noticed from the report, last year we were able to bring to town meeting and have approved by town meeting over a million dollars in applications. This year, the total amount of funds available for us to even discuss is something under $900,000. So, the funding continues to shrink a little bit at the moment. The, there were applications, again, for all the four categories that we, that might possibly qualify, and there were applications that appear to total more than the available funds we have. So, again, the, the discussions, besides the various qualifying and, and other possibilities with regard to applications, will have to limit funds to some extent regardless. And at least that's my comments for the moment. Any questions from the board?
Any questions, anybody? Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
We're now moving to presentations on disposal services. The first presentation is from Kovata, CMS.
Good evening, Mr. Lawton, members of the board. Thank you very much. I actually have a small presentation. I'd like to, if I have a moment, I could...
Please do.
Plug it in, please. Power cord over here. I don't need it for this, I need it for, I have some speakers I'd like to plug in.
I think that you might be able to use the speakers on your laptop.
I can, but I didn't.
I can, but I need anything.
The laptop needs to be plugged in?
No, the speakers, I need power.
Okay.
So, I don't know, we have a small section over there.
It's all done.
Wow. It's outrageous.
Ed made me pay. Ed made me pay. If the population continues to grow, the negative impact on the environment and the earth's climate is evident.
Jamie, can you get the lights a little bit?
The negative impact on the environment and the earth's climate is evident. Waste is a problem that will not go away and will only grow over time as the world's population continues to increase. Over 50% of our nation's waste is buried. The latest research reports an estimate of 3,500 acres of land is lost to landfills every year. Energy from waste has proven to be an effective, safe, and environmentally responsible alternative to landfills. Covanta and its Seamass facility continue to lead the way in creating energy from solid waste. As a direct result, we decrease our dependence on fossil fuel, preserve precious land, and reduce landfill methane emissions, which all contribute to global warming. Responsible trash management begins with us. When we reduce the waste we produce, reuse and recycle things we can use again, what is left over can be used to make clean, renewable energy. Each and every day, trash comes to Seamass. It is here where clean, renewable energy begins.
The waste comes in by trucks, where it's weighed on our scale, then driven to the tipping floor and dumped on the tipping floor. It's a three-acre covered tipping floor, and that's where our personnel inspect it to see if there's any improper waste and other things that should have been diverted from the waste prior to disposal. We have secondary inspection process beyond the tipping floor, where our technicians can look at the waste as it's coming up the conveyor and inspect it further for anything that's of a safety hazard, or chemical hazard, or any waste that would cause a problem in the shredders. And a perfect example of that might be a propane tank, which could cause a fire or explosion in the plant. Other examples might be large bulky items which could jam up our shredders and waste processes.
Even in an ideal situation, loads coming into the plant still contain items that must be removed. The secondary sorting and inspection process is an important step to eliminating potential hazards and recovering valuable reusable materials. The most significant reusable material removed on a regular basis is metal. Every year, Covanta facilities remove over 400,000 tons of ferrous and over 15,000 tons of non-ferrous metal, the equivalent amount of steel that would be used to build five Golden Gate Bridges, and in the production of over 1 billion aluminum beverage cans.
Here, we look at this as fuel. We don't look at this as a waste product. This here is going to be turned into electricity that's going to light these lights here above us. It's plentiful. There's plenty of garbage out there for our use. It's a great alternative to burying it in the ground. Energy from waste is a valuable tool. We process over a million tons a year, and out of that, we take out all the metal, the ferrous, the non-ferrous, the copper, the stainless steel, the brass. All that stuff gets recycled. It's all valuable material that we get to reuse. We're the largest recycler in Massachusetts. Unfortunately, if we didn't recycle this, or if it went to the landfill, that material will be lost and buried forever.
One of the biggest misconceptions about using trash to make renewable electricity is that we want you to make more trash, and that's not true. We want you to reduce, reuse, and recycle aggressively, and then the small bits left over we'll use as a fuel to make electricity, just like when you compost. You use the scraps one more time. We're using your trash scraps one more time.
Customers bring their waste to Covanta Seamass for a couple of reasons. First of all, we're able to provide them a dependable and reliable disposal site for their waste, and we've been doing this at Covanta Seamass year in and year out since 1989. Further, they bring their waste to us because it's environmentally the preferred method of disposal. They would prefer not to put their waste in a landfill. And at Seamass, we're able to meet the needs of the communities consistently.
The burn process, as well as all others from this point forward, are overseen and controlled in the control room. From this area, Seamass technicians have full control and a firsthand view of everything moving into the boilers, as well as the end temperatures being produced.
This is the heart and brains of the operation. Behind me, you'll see the power control operations, where the fuel feed to the boilers is controlled, the emissions are controlled. The operators to my right are diligently watching the emissions on a continuous basis, ensuring that combustion is complete and environmentally sound. We also control the fuel side operations. That controls the shredding, the conveyors feeding up to the boilers, the tipping floor operations. So the operator behind me is really controlling the entire facility from this location. Also, the power control room operators are controlling the boilers. They're constantly adjusting air into the furnace, fuel feed into the furnace, as well as steam flow. They're controlling steam flow by utilizing the boilers and complete combustion. The steam gets fed to two separate turbines, generating approximately 80 megawatts combined of electricity.
All of Covanta's federally regulated emissions average more than 60% below permitted limits, with the exception of nitrogen oxide emissions, which still remain 17% below permitted limits. Even more encouraging is Covanta's newest research and innovation, which will be utilized in many of its plants like Seamass to reduce nitrogen oxide emissions. Nitrogen oxide levels will be reduced to half of the current allowable federal limits, while increasing energy efficiency at the same time.
U.S. EPA and the federal government set standards of emissions that are most protective of even the most sensitive individuals in our populations. Here at Covanta Energy, we're proud to say that we strive to meet 60% to 80% below those even most protective federal standards in all of our facilities. This is part of the Covanta's Clean World Initiative, and we're pretty proud of that. We've been very successful at implementing this in the last number of years. It takes a lot of effort by a lot of people every day to make that happen. The majority of what you're seeing coming off the stack is a nice white puffy cloud. What that really is, is water vapor. As you can imagine, when you throw out your trash, there's quite a bit of water and moisture in it. And certainly, when we combust that trash and recover valuable metals and renewable resources from it, it drives off the water, and that's primarily what comes out through the stack. Very similar to a tea kettle right on your house stove. It helps us out by lowering our environmental footprint to the lowest possible, so that we keep everybody safe, environmentally compliant, and we offer good value to our towns and customers.
It has been said that the best way to teach others is to lead by example. When it comes to taking advantage of reusable materials, Covanta Seamass demonstrates their commitment and resourcefulness to the reuse of recyclable material that gets taken out in the separation process. Here at Seamass, we get in over a million tons of trash each year, and in that million tons, we recover about 47,000 tons of metals each year. We have ferrous metals, the kind that stick to a magnet, and non-ferrous metals that don't stick to a magnet. So before combustion, after we've chopped up our trash, made it into fuel, we pull out metals, we then recycle that. Some of it is in the form of currency. We estimate about $1,000 a day in coins goes through our facility. That's a lot of metal. That's a lot of money. We are the single largest source in Massachusetts of recycled metal, which is something to be proud of. We aren't just asking people to recycle, we recycle. We recycle our stormwater. We recycle our air from the tipping hall, so we use it in the process. We recycle leachate from area landfills, which is rainwater that goes through a landfill and it's collected at the bottom. We use it here.
It is very important to practice what you preach, and here at Seamass, it is part of the culture here to reduce, reuse, recycle as much as we possibly can, and to share that with the communities that we contract with. We really should be reusing as many of our materials as we possibly can.
We try and walk the talk because we think recycling makes as much sense for business as it does for home, and that's why energy from waste fits into the recycling mindset. You need to reduce, reuse, recycle, and then you need to recover as much energy from that waste as you can.
Recycling is important to all of us, and at Seamass, because we generate renewable energy and we create electricity, our cities and towns are eligible to receive what we call renewable energy credits from the sale of this electricity we produce. Through the DEP, our customers, the cities and towns, are eligible to receive grant monies, which these communities can use to secure funding for programs in and around the town relating to recycling programs.
We really are the fourth R. We are recover. Recover the energy of the remaining waste after communities have done their recycling. So we're not in competition. We actually are just the next step.
You know, producing electricity, which we all know, we need the energy as a country. We rely too much on foreign oil and foreign energy sources, while we have a great energy source in our own backyard.
The future of producing clean energy is in our hands, and all of us can make a difference. We have learned that we cannot avoid waste, and fortunately, facilities like Covanta Seamass continue to discover ways to use it to our advantage in the form of clean, renewable energy. In a world with a growing population that produces waste on a global scale, this is the future of waste management. Working together in partnership with Covanta and its growing ingenuity will, one step at a time, lead us into a cleaner tomorrow.
Thank you. By the way, my name is Tom Sapolar. I am the Business Manager at Covanta Seamass at the Rochester facility. I want to thank you for taking a few minutes to go through that presentation. For those of you that aren't familiar with the facility, we thought it was important that you see it and you get an understanding of the sophistication, the environmental security and benefits that we produce throughout this technology. I mean, you may hear that this technology is 40, 30, 40-year-old technology, but it's the dominant technology that exists today, and it's here for the future as well. So, you know, we're happy to have had Town of Howard's business for the past 20 odd years, and we're looking forward to the opportunity to continue to serve the town. And this technology will be there for years to come. So, I handed you folks a packet of just a summary of the proposal. You know, I'll be brief, because I know I've taken up some time already. If I can just kind of take you through that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I know you folks did sign a term sheet of ours back, probably in the early summer timeframe. I apologize, I don't remember the exact date. The terms have changed a bit. I mean, we've seen that the market conditions have changed, so we've changed. So, just to kind of be brief, on the first page of that proposal, we're looking for, and again, your current contract ends at the end of calendar year 2014. You may very well be aware of that. We are looking for a contract term of, initial term of five or 10 years. We'd love to have 10, but we're open to five, with an optional five-year additional term beyond that. That would be subject to the consent of both parties, so neither party could unilaterally extend it without both parties agreeing to it. Let's talk about the pricing. The tipping fee, we kind of break the tipping fee down. We have what we call an acceptance fee. In the contract, which you also have in your packet, it reads as an acceptance fee. For simplicity, we'll call it a disposal fee. That fee is $65 per ton. We understand that transportation costs, I know that Lincoln does a fantastic job running the town's transportation and transfer station, but we expect transportation costs to increase throughout the years. Nothing that Lincoln can control, it's just a fact. So what we're talking about doing is providing the town a $5 per ton transportation credit, which essentially brings down your disposal rate at Seamass. Your net tipping fee is $60 per ton, starting in 2015. Okay? So we would be looking for an escalation on top of that $60 per ton of 2.5% on an annual basis throughout each year of the contract. Okay? Tonnages, your current contract does have some minimum and maximum tonnages in it. We realize the marketplace has changed. It's a little difficult for communities to get their arms around tonnages today and in the future, so this contract will have no minimum or maximum tonnages. We're simply asking the town to deliver the tonnages that they, after they've recycled, we're looking for the remaining MSW, the remaining solid waste after you've recycled and pulled out all the materials, organics, recyclable materials, and so forth. We're looking for the residual MSW, as a video discussed as well. There's a provision in there called additional services. We take pride in the fact that we do a lot of things fairly well. We'd like to have the opportunity to be able to service your community with recycling, with electronic waste disposal, with organics disposal, with bulky waste disposal, secured medication disposal. So we're looking for the opportunity to serve the town in the future, today for some of those, and down the road with some of those disposal options as well, as organics becomes more of an issue with the communities. And lastly, recycling. We are open for business at the Yama Transfer Station for recycling. If that's something that the town wanted to consider, it's available to the town. So, I'm not going to take a lot of your time. I think we've kind of explained to you about Covanta in the past. The next page kind of illustrates, over a 10-year period, what the cost would be on an annual basis to the Town of Howard's for their disposal. As you can see, it's $60 in the first year, and it was going to escalate thereafter by that 2.5% rate. Again, we're working off of an acceptance fee, but we're providing some relief for transportation costs, which we think will, we hope will be helpful for the town down the road. And we're open to any questions that you have at this point in time on the proposal. And again, you have a contract in your packet that talks about that as well.
Tom, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, if I could call you Tom. Welcome. Thank you for coming, by the way.
My pleasure.
So the day before this contract goes into place, we're paying X, and the next day, we're paying $60, right?
Yes.
And my understanding is a pretty significant delta, if you will.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're paying about $37 or so today. Rough numbers.
You know, a bit of a trade shock, right? I mean, for us, and has a big impact on, you know, what we do here, certainly. Could you walk us through, you know, I'm assuming at the moment, at the $30-some-odd-dollar a ton, you're at least breaking even if not making money, and then suddenly, you know, a year from now, it's going to go up to what it's going to go up to. What's the cost driver? You know, is something on your end that, you know, you've got to replace half the equipment in the facility, or something is driving it to say, okay, it must be that high in order for us to still stay in business?
Now, that's a great question, and we understand for the communities on the Cape and the other original Seamass communities who are going from the mid-30s to a higher rate, that it's a tough pill to swallow. You know, we're happy that the towns have had the opportunity to have that low rate for as many years as they have, but the reality is, it does cost a lot of money to process the waste at the facility in an environmentally solid manner. And, you know, we have to keep the facility running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to keep it in the manner that we can control the waste, abide by all the environmental controls and regulations that we have to, to make sure the facility's safe, to make sure we have highly skilled people, so that the facility can run 24 hours a day. sure we have highly skilled people, so that the facility can run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And we can handle your waste in situations that which happened back in 2007 when we had the fire and the facility was shut down for a period of time. But the reality is, yes, our costs have increased over the past twenty years. Who's haven't? But the market, the market is, the market really dictates the rates. It's not so much us, it's really, it's what the customers will pay for the waste at the end of the day that's going to drive, that's going to dictate the market price. So it's a market, the market will drive the prices, but I'd be lying to you if I said our costs didn't go up in the past twenty years since that contract initially went in place.
But if I could just be so bold to ask, you know, with the thirty-some-odd-dollar a ton, were you breaking even? Were you losing money or at that time?
In the original, we're, we can't run that facility without making money. We have to pay people, we have to pay skilled people the proper wages. We're a public company. We were making money, and we are making money today, yes.
Okay. Is there any, I just keep going for a second. Is there any new environmental regulations you have to satisfy coming up on the end of this contract? Is there any, like, new scrubbers or something?
No, no, there's no new, I mean, it's constant changes in a lot of the environmental limits that have to be adhered to, or Covanta puts pressure on ourselves to make sure that we're, as we talked about in the video, I think we said we're sixty percent below the, a lot of the regulatory limits. You know, we want to make sure we have a state-of-the-art facility and a superior technology. And it does cost money to make sure that happens. You know, running a facility, it's complex. It requires a lot of skilled people. It requires a lot of, a lot of money to keep it running on a regular basis to ensure that we're able to take the waste. And yes, you know, public company, we are in business to make money. I'm not, there's no secret to that.
Okay. And I think in the video, the capacity of the plant that we deal with is eighty megawatts, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Do you happen to know what the capacity factor is, what I mean by that?
Yeah, we're on.
Is the average megawatt you're putting out?
We, it's an eighty megawatts per hour. We sell about six-hundred thousand megawatts a year, which we put out on the grid. To kind of put that into numbers, you might be able to better understand is, that powers up, that provides electricity to about seventy-five thousand homes in the area, to kind of put it in perspective.
But are you running that plant at eighty megawatts constant, or do you, during the course of the day or the year, whatever, fluctuate?
On average, on average, it's about eighty megawatts. So that means it's going to, there are some fluctuations to that.
Okay. Do you happen to know what, whatever it is, NSTAR, whoever it is, pays you for kilowatt-hour electricity?
I don't. It does vary, and I don't have that with me.
Does it time-of-day variant or time-of-year variant?
I think it's both.
Okay.
I think, as you know, peaks and, you know, peaks and valleys, peaks of usage are going to dictate the rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Lynda?
I see that additional services and recycling disposal, paper, et cetera, is additional costs. And what are those additional costs?
No, that's not necessarily. We are, what we're simply looking for there, Lynda, is we, we'd like to be able to, if the town has a need for recycling disposal, or electronic waste disposal, or organic materials disposal, what we're simply asking the town to do is go through their normal process of securing bids for that and identify, go through your process of identifying the best bid, the lowest bidder, and we'd like to have the opportunity to match that and be able to perform that.
Okay.
And it could be, it might be, you know, with regards to recycling, it might be, you know, the market conditions kind of dictate whether it's going to pay you a rebate for some of those materials or it will not.
Maybe I'll try this again. Do you have a price structure already that you would be willing to share with us?
We have a-
I understand things are marketed and RFP'd and la-la-la. I'm just trying to get to an answer.
Yeah, for the recycling material, yes, we do. We have a pricing structure for cardboard, for mixed paper, and for commingled material.
And will you share that with us?
I can share that with you. I don't have it with me at the moment, but I do know that paper, paper, mixed paper and cardboard will pay anywhere from fifteen to sixty dollars per ton, and the commingled material is probably, it's not going to, it's not going to pay anything most likely to the town.
Okay.
So you'll make money on the fiber-type products, the commingled materials, the cans, the bottles. It's not going to, you're not going to receive any money for that.
Okay, so we'll look forward to getting that pricing structure. And if we did use these additional services, we would have to truck this to Yarmouth?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
No.
Ed, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, first.
Tom, quick question.
Sure.
Quick question on the calculation. In the chart, it talks about the tipping fee going up, starting at sixty dollars.
That's correct.
But I think in Appendix A, it talks about the, just to clear, it's two-and-a-half percent on the sixty-five dollars per year, and then the five-dollar credit is increased by two-and-a-half percent.
That's correct.
So the first year, it nets to sixty, but thereafter, there's a change because it's a two-and-a-half percent increase on five dollars, whatever it is, but then the two-and-a-half percent increase on sixty-five dollars. So you have a widening, I think.
It should be, I guess the simple way of looking at it is your bill is going to be, for January of 2015, would be sixty dollars per month.
That's easy, yes.
Sixty dollars per ton.
Yes.
And so the next year, it's going to be sixty dollars per ton times two-and-a-half percent. So-
That isn't what the contract says, though.
Well, the acceptance fee in Appendix A says sixty-five dollars per ton.
Correct. And a two-and-a-half percent increase-
And then I think in Section 3.4 or 3.6, the transportation credit has the five dollars per ton.
It's right, it's three-point, three-point-zero-five.
Correct. Section 3.05.
Right.
So that five dollars per ton credit also increases at the rate of two-and-a-half percent.
But I think, but I think it increases at a different rate. I just wanted to make sure that the chart matched what the contract said.
I thought it did.
Okay.
I thought it did.
We can check that. I just wanted to make sure the language was the same.
Pretty sure it is.
And then-
But I'd be happy to review that, Bob.
We can do that. And then the other, the other point was on 2.04, on the subparagaphs, what we're, what this requires, if we decide to do any of those services, then once we get our price, then we send it to you, and you either match it or reject it.
That's correct. Only for, only for longer-term contracts. If you folks are in the habit of doing a contract for a year or less, it's not something we're interested in participating in. We want to provide you services on a longer-term basis, but you are correct in your-
So would that be three or more years?
One year or longer.
One year or long?
Yes.
So over one year?
Over one year, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ed?
In the presentation, it was brought up, and you brought it up in your comments, that the plant runs and produces off gases at sixty percent less for most, seventeen percent less for nitrous oxide. In the reduction, do you guys receive, market the, your clean air credits?
Clean air credits? I'm not aware of any clean air credits that are marketable.
In many, many air basins around the country, if you're running a plant below the allowed limits, the amount that you're under, you can basically sell to other companies that are over.
Understood.
And it's a revenue, and I'd like to understand if that's one of your revenue sources also.
No, it's not. But what we are able to market is, because we are a renewable energy company, I think you heard about, a little bit about it in the video, and there's a handout in your packet, is the Class II renewable energy credits through the sale of electricity. And I think there was, there's an email in your packet that the DEP sent out today, and I think, you know, the state awarded about two-and-a-half million dollars in credits. In fact, one of the nearby communities, I think Eastham, you know, realized about a hundred thousand dollars for that for their transfer station. So that is something that the communities, that we do market and the communities do benefit from and have an opportunity to pull in funding from and for, for the benefit of recycling.
Can I just ask, if you know how many waste energy plants you have in your system?
We have four in the state of Massachusetts, and we have four nationwide, and there are another handful overseas. I don't have the exact number. Forty-four in the United States.
Are they all the, all the same technology?
Most of them are what we call mass burn. The waste goes into a pit and gets burnt that way. The CMA plant is what they call an IDF refuse to derive fuel, where they actually shred the waste first before it goes into the boilers. So, but it's essentially the same technology after the, once the waste goes into the boiler, it's essentially the same technology throughout.
I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. What I think I heard you say was that there's, you're not anticipating any particular increase in costs, that you're going from thirty to sixty dollars because the market will allow you to do that. Is that what I heard?
What I said, and that's a great question, the market, you know, we believe the market dictates the pricing for waste for a lot of commodities that are out there. But the fact remains, costs have increased since the facility started up, started in the 1980s, and that is certainly a factor. But waste prices have actually decreased in the past, I would say in the past ten years, certainly in the past five years. Tipping fees were in the eighties and nineties, you know, not as recently as five or six years ago. I would say, you know, 2007, 2008, the economic decline certainly had a factor in that because there was less waste being generated. So it is certainly the market, but costs of the facility, cost to keep the facility up and running and economically viable and meeting all the requirements that we need are certainly a factor, like any other business would have as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Well, we thank you very much. Let me just remove my-
Yes, sir. Certainly. But please use the microphone.
Alan Thompson. With the cost increase per ton, does that mean that the waste company will absorb further costs, like clean air, any stack costs or any of those types of costs? Or will they be passing them on to the towns as historically, historically they have done?
Most of, pardon me, most of the costs borne by the, borne by the facility, Covanta CMA incur those costs, and we pick those costs up. What the gentleman's probably referring to, there have been certain regulatory changes that have come about. The most significant one occurred in 1993. In the contract, it refers to them as change in law costs. Those costs there, the communities, we do ask the communities to bear those costs, to bear a portion of those costs. We don't contemplate any of those costs happening. We certainly work with the regulators and government to make sure that they don't happen. And again, we don't expect them to happen. We can't predict, can't say that they won't happen, but we do our best to make sure that they do not.
So I guess the answer is yes.
The short answer is yes. They do exist. We do our best to mitigate them.
But the answer is yes, we will bear the burden of those changes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mike?
What Mr. Thompson was alluding to, and very few people go back this far, he does, however, was that our original waste acquisition agreement was for twelve dollars a ton. And way back in the late eighties, very, yeah, late eighties, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, we signed on a dotted line. And that was an outrageous fee at that point. But even today, our rate is twelve dollars a ton, plus the two significant change in law costs. One was, Tom talked about, was a mercury retrofit, where we actually signed over approximately, memory serves me correctly, about a six-hundred thousand dollar check to Covanta, and in turn, we got that back with a six percent interest over the remaining life of the contract. So we actually are not paying thirty-seven fifty-one per day. We're actually paying more, like about thirty dollars per ton. And Tom, I have a question with this. Is this, is this change in law costs simply state that this is going to be averaged out upon to a total one-point-two million dollars or just the contract?
One point-two million.
I mean, one, one-point-two million tons per year.
Correct. It is, right. It's spread out amongst, it's spread out amongst the group of tons that come to the facility, correct?
Okay. Our original waste acquisition agreements, we, the tier-one communities, that were the financial mechanism to get that plant constructed, bear the whole cost of the change in law. This is more fair, in my opinion, the way this is written now.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We now, excuse me, we now move on to ABC.
And a change in laptops.
You have to-
This is not like Mac versus-
You see?
That'd be confusing.
That'd be funny.
We should just have a machine and have people just drop the sticks in.
Dan, you ready? Good evening.
Hello.
I want to thank the board and the town administration for allowing us to present tonight. My name is Mike Camara. I'm the Vice President General Manager of ABC Disposal, President of Biffa Waste, and Manager of Zero Waste Solutions. Go ahead, Dan.
No.
The arrow.
Move the arrow. So far, I understand it.
Please bear with us, we'll try and get this straightened out in a minute.
Is that the presentation?
It's the other one. I guess she has it.
No. She have it, you sent it to her?
She, she, she does have it. I don't think she has it.
Want to ask her?
It's on our, it's on our Dropbox if you can access it.
Okay.
We have it on our Dropbox. You have Dropbox.
Sorry.
I have it on my computer. You want to borrow mine?
Seriously?
Seriously.
Yeah.
Sure.
We've got it on here, too.
It's on the, hang on. Yeah. See if that does anything for you.
Carry to the rescue.
Maybe. Mine doesn't look any different than that. Do I get extra points if this works? Now you're going to complain. Now he's going to complain that he doesn't have his computer.
I know. I'm going to have to listen to that, too.
Absolutely. Perfect.
Perfect.
We'll send you the bill for the-
Perfect.
We'll send you the bill for the...
I knew that was coming.
I think it's about five dollars a ton, Mr. Turner.
All right, Dan, let's try this again. Is it moving to the next one? There we go. Why are we here? We honestly feel that there's plenty of room for environmentally friendly competition. If you look back at how waste was managed years ago, people burned in their backyard. I have relatives, I remember burning in fifty-five gallon drums in their backyard. Open burning in landfills. You had landfills with no liners, then obviously, thank God, our rules changed, and they started to line landfills. Incinerators became popular in the mid eighteen hundreds, I think the first one was in Manhattan in the mid eighteen hundreds, and eventually, about forty years ago, it moved towards waste energy. And then there's us. We feel that we're the next generation in managing waste in a very environmentally friendly manner. We've been around for a long time. We've obviously started forty-six years ago with our hauling company, ABC Disposal, and added several other companies. We've grown quite a bit, obviously, our customer base has grown dramatically, and proud to say that we employ over two hundred employees, some of whom live on the Cape. I used to live on the Cape years ago. And we run, on average, eighty to eighty-five trucks on the road every day. We have over a hundred trucks, a variety of trucks. Also, we just ordered twenty-four new trucks, all with compressed natural gas. We should be opening very soon a compressed natural gas station in New Bedford, near one of our facilities. We have Course and Buffalo Waste Services with a substantial transfer station in New Bedford, and just a couple of years ago, we added two additional facilities, the one in Rochester and the one, of course, down here on the Cape. Division of the Cape also has a stump dump that recycles wood wastes, and that's leased to PA Landers, they operate that facility. We did add a recycling division in New Bedford. We currently bail cardboard, plastics, newspaper, office paper. We manage combing recyclables there and single-stream recyclables. The facility on the left, that's our transfer station in New Bedford. It's also one of the largest construction and demolition recycling facilities in the area as well. That's, of course, one of our tractor trailers. Along with our growth, you can see that we've added quite a few different properties. The one I read is the newest one, and that's a recycling facility that, like I said earlier, we acquired in April. I'll also mention that we are the largest hauler on the Martha's Vineyard. These are some of the contracts that ABC has with several communities. Town of Beaverton, Metropoasant, and Rochester, we've been servicing for well over twenty years. New Bedford just signed a new ten-year contract with us, and we're going to automate in New Bedford in July with an automated collection, which includes compressed natural gas vehicles. Getting ready to sign a new ten-year contract with the Town of Seccong. Well, I would add that we start a new collection contract in the Town of Plymouth in beginning of January. And again, that community will be done with all compressed natural gas vehicles. Our new facility will be able to handle MSW, both residential, commercial, construction, demolition debris. Will take senior residuals from our processing operation in Bedford and use that in part of our processes in our new facility. We build the recycle, single-stream recyclables, source-separated recyclables, handle cardboard, combingled, all the recyclables, be able to handle e-waste there, paper products, white goods. And I think the nicest thing about our operation is all in one location. You don't have to go to multiple facilities, we can handle everything right there. We'll also be managing organics there as well. We've chosen to go with a company called CP Manufacturing, worldwide company. They have the phenomenal ability to organize and plan the layout for this type of facility to achieve, as you can see, the highest recycling rates. We expect to be able to take everything that comes inbound and recycle it between ninety and ninety-five percent, which is, I don't know of anywhere in the world that's higher than that. Very proud of the fact that most of our power is going to come from the sun. We are building a pretty substantial building, it's ninety-four thousand square feet, and we are putting in eighty thousand square feet of solar panels. And as I said, the majority of our power will come from the sun. Very, very green facility. That's what the facility looks on the outside. We've chosen to design the facility to be minimal impact to our neighbors. The side that faces our neighbors will not have any doors, and so it's minimal impact to our neighbors. They're a good distance away anyway, but we wanted it to be as quiet as possible for them. Bill Ratigan from Work Two, our partner, it's a Cape Cod company, will take over this slide.
Work Two, my name is Bill Ratigan, by the way, I'm President of Work Two. We were started a little over four years ago, and we're still headquartered in Born, Mass. But we're very proud to have the opportunity to partner with the Camara family, specifically ABC Disposal, to create zero-waste solutions. And the aspect as significant and as technologically advanced as the plant is in and of itself, with the sophistication of the recycling equipment, our opportunity to take that material that would still be destined for the landfill and be able to convert it into a substitute fuel, not just for coal, but many of our initial clients are woody biomass facilities producing electricity in New Hampshire and Vermont. So I'm certainly welcome, any questions that you may have relative to our product, but the net difference is that once Ecotec is used, even as little as in a ten to twenty percent co-fire, our customer facilities will be able to move those emissions needle back into the green and accomplish a lot of the things in the reduction of the environmental impact issues that we're trying to deal with, and still be able to continue to operate facilities that we will need to be able to satisfy the demand for the increase in electricity. I have some samples, if I may just leave them with the board.
Very happy to say that we received our DEP approval, which is a modification of our existing permit on October twenty-eighth. We submitted our application for construction to the Rochester Building Department last Wednesday. Everything, to my knowledge, they said everything was complete as far as our application, and we expect to have that permit soon and begin construction very, very soon. Here's the timeline.
Let's see about that slide, you confused me a bit.
Yes.
Your application's been, you haven't received approval yet from DEP, the application has been...
We received, we received DEP approval on October twenty-eighth.
Okay. I didn't quite understand your statement on that.
Okay. We'll begin construction probably third or fourth week of November. Equipment's been ordered, solar panels have been ordered. We plan to have the building finished by May, that's the target for Page Construction. February is targeted for delivery and they'll begin installing the equipment. Solar system will start beginning the installation at the same time. Our goal is to be running the summer of 2014. We're actually pushing for July first, and everybody's telling me that is achievable. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Malboni, he's our Sales and Marketing Manager.
Thank you. This is just a couple of snippets that we pulled out of environmental magazines and some of the things that are happening, up to date. These are all up-to-date articles within the last, from May to September, actually. Recent data from EPA confirms that incineration emits more greenhouse gases than co-fired plants on a per capita basis. Incineration is a particularly inefficient way to produce energy and creates minimal economic activity compared to recycling. And that's from the Minnesota Representative Frank Hornstein. Incineration, definition is burn to ash. So I don't know if that has any meaning to any of the people on the board, but ninety percent of our discarded materials can be recycled or composted. Mass burn incineration reduces trash only seventy-five percent by weight. The twenty-five percent that remains as ash must be then landfillled. And ash landfills in Massachusetts are filling up. And that's from Lana Zamarro and Christopher Poloni, both of them are from the Sierra Club. The last little snippet, recycling versus incineration. Malcolm Williams, a Director of the UK Zero Waste Alliance, contends even ninety percent recycling should be attainable. It is just a myth that recycling is a difficult thing to do. So why on earth is anybody planning anything that is going to burn or bury more than ten percent of the waste we're producing? And that's from the EK head. The facility comparisons. Solid waste, both of us are going to accept solid waste, mercury recovery programs, both of us have that. We have single-stream recycling, source-separated recycling, construction and demolition materials can be taken there, e-waste, white goods, bulky waste, and we have transportation. We have transportation in-house. We're doing this right now. We're not doing it down the road, it's going to be ready to go in Rochester, but we're doing all these things right now in New Bedford, in our facilities in New Bedford. We have an MSW site in New Bedford, and everything's right here in southeastern Massachusetts.
Go ahead, Dan. Go ahead, take that one.
And the question, on behalf of the town, the question you have to ask yourself, on behalf of the Town of Howard, do you want to continue to commit to a forty-year-old technology that burns your waste, or do you want to commit to new technology that recycles your waste? Our goal is to protect the environment for our generation and for generations to come.
We feel we have the lowest price. We're offering the town sixty dollars per ton for municipal solid waste, and a new rate for construction and demolition, seventy dollars per ton for C and D materials, which is five dollars less than you're paying now. We have the higher recycling rates, our facility is solar-powered, we have the same backup disposal site similar to Covanta's. Again, we're a one-stop shop facility, we can handle everything that you have and generate as far as waste in the town. We have no meaningless deadlines. If you want to sign at the end of your contract with CMAS, we're happy to do that, so we're not going to press you into when you need to sign. We feel that zero-waste solutions is by far the most environmentally friendly method of managing waste. But please keep in mind that if we weren't here tonight, if we didn't get involved in this process, weren't planning to build our facility, we'd be paying a lot more. I mean, CMAS back in two thousand and ten was walking around telling everybody it was eighty dollars a ton. And just back in February and March, they were talking about rates in the mid-sixties, the seventies. The only reason their rates are coming down is because we're at the table, and I feel that we're at the table offering a much, much better technology. In fact, the state has had a moratorium on waste energy for over fifteen years now. If they thought it was a good technology and the right technology for the future, obviously we'd see more plants being built that are waste energy. Thank you for time, your time, and I want to ask you if you have any questions right now, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, so just to be clear, because I don't think it's clear in your presentation, and maybe it's just me not understanding it, but the Ecotec process doesn't produce any electricity, the only it produces are these briquettes, is that right?
We produce the fuel that will be utilized by plants that produce electricity.
Okay, but at your plant itself...
No.
There will be no electricity produced, is that right?
That's correct.
Other than the solar panels? Okay, so the waste comes in, it gets made into these briquettes?
A portion of the waste that cannot be recycled...
Right.
That is destined for the landfill is made into the briquette.
Okay, and who burns these, or where do they go?
They'll go to electrical generation plants. Initially, we have eighty-four thousand tons that are lettered intent for five facilities in New Hampshire and Vermont. They happen to currently use woody biomass. And even in that context, we're able to improve their emissions situation by just co-firing twenty percent of Ecotec with their woody biomass. Plus the fact that our material is hydrophobic, it does not leach, it can store outside, et cetera. It's significant to them because their BTU value changes significantly anytime there's a weather impact on their woody biomass fuels, so that's important. As it would be in the coal environment, where every time it rains, coal is literally creating a sulfuric acid that's going into the ground. We don't leach, and the University of Massachusetts has endorsed that, so...
Okay, is this something that, you know, I think most people are familiar with things like pellet stoves and whatnot, is this something that potentially where the modification could be burnt in a pellet stove in a house?
It really is not recommended to do that because of the higher BTU value. We're talking about an average of ten thousand five hundred to eleven thousand BTU per pound.
Okay.
That's pretty significant, and depending upon the nature of the home or the residential stoves, it might not be a good idea.
Okay, and I don't know who to ask this question to, but can you share with us what, at least with your estimate for the capital cost of that plant will be?
Do we know what the...
The facility you're building, what's the capital cost? What's it going to cost?
You want to do...
Thirty-five million.
And do you have the funding secured, the financing secured for that at this point?
Yes, I have added this sheet into your packet, and if you look on it, there's a phone number there to contact, Carlos Tacuna, the Senior Vice President, Webster Bank. I've also included the phone number to the Director of Preconstruction for Page Construction, Mike Chaney, and also Hans Alay, who's the Sales Engineer for CP Manufacturing, who's building the equipment to go in our facility.
Okay, can you, so can you tell us or state to us unequivocally that this plant is going to be built starting this month?
Yes, sir.
And will be online next summer?
Yes, it will, sir, yes.
No doubt about it.
Those are the commitments I have from Page Construction, from the bank, and from CP Manufacturing, they will be ready to go.
Okay, and if I could be so bold again, so I asked the other gentleman from Covanta, you know, what determines your tipping fee? Other than just saying it's the market? Because I think the market might have gotten together and said we ought to make it sixty bucks, I don't know.
We built the model based on tipping fees, based on the sale of recyclables, and based on the sale of fuel. What we also had to do is prove to the bank that if the fuel didn't work, our project would still work. And the number that we're quoting is what was built into the model, and it satisfied all the financial institutions.
Okay, and could I just ask the Ecotec process, how many other locations it's used in, or used, you know?
How many other locations?
Well, this isn't the guinea pig, I hope.
This will be the first facility where we are commercially manufacturing in volume. We've been producing in various test facilities for three, two and a half of the last four years. So our clients have already done burn tests and feed tests and emissions tests. We've produced fuel that has been successfully utilized, and that's why these people have been willing to give us orders at this stage of production.
Okay, again, if I could be so bold, this plant, when it's going to full capacity, is going to make a gazillion of these things, I assume?
We're going to make eighty-four thousand tons in a year in a single shift.
Yeah, in a single shift, how many of these things are in a ton?
A bunch.
How many of these are in a ton?
A bunch.
I've never done that, I can give you density values, but...
I'm just trying to understand, you know, so far as somebody's made, I'm being facetious, you know, three barrelfuls of this stuff at a time.
We've produced tons and tons of this material, and that, enough to be able to have it burn in these commercial facilities. So it's not as if we've created one or two neat briquettes, and wouldn't it be great if we could make more of them? We've been able to not only produce the material that has been tested, but we've got the commitments of the university as well as the manufacturers of the equipment that will be able to produce it at thirty tons an hour.
Okay, anything toxic about this?
No, actually, the neat thing about it, in addition to the fact that it's hydrophobic, but...
Excuse me.
It's the elimination of the material that would create the problems that is most significant. And the fact that we, the binding, the thing that keeps it together, there is no extra material added, this is all material that was purely in the waste stream. And so once it's bound like that, the non-leaching capability also protects it from any kind of, you know, issues.
Okay, would it be possible for you to provide us with a flow chart of how this process works?
Certainly. In fact, I'd love to invite you to our facility in New Bedford, one of our test facilities there, so at your convenience, we'd love to show you how we do it.
Great.
We have had other towns come in and go through the process, go through the whole process of C and D.
We can show you the differences of what will be in the new facility as well.
I think you've answered this question, but let me ask again. You're increasing production very, you know, multitude of, multiple times, right? There's a market for these at that rate?
Oh, sure, yeah. That, I mean, just in the, our initial clients happen to be woody biomass only because their neighbors...
They're not going to make more than you can sell. You feel?
No, we still will be burning for a long time, regardless of the pressures change, close to a billion tons a year, nine hundred thousand tons of coal to produce electricity.
Nine hundred million.
Nine hundred million, excuse me. Billion tons was the number a little while ago. So I'm old enough to think a billion is still a big number, you know? And so as long as we have this demand and the need, and that's in the U.S. alone, that's not worldwide. So the market opportunity for a product like Ecotec is very significant.
But these aren't allowed in Massachusetts, is that correct? Is that, is there a reason for that?
We knew that since incineration was such, was not an attractive thing in Massachusetts, right? And when we started to talk to people at the state, we knew that our marketplace would be very ample outside of Massachusetts. So our clients are largely, as I mentioned, in northern New England and initially in the Midwest, where, by the way, once they start employing Ecotec as a component of their fuel where they're burning coal, will reduce the acid rain that's coming our way. So there are a couple of little ancillary benefits as well.
Linda, you were?
Sixty dollars a ton escalation, min, maxes?
No minimum, no maximum, and the rate for escalation is two point five percent.
Thank you.
Ed?
So you're telling me, other than the, the plants in Vermont and New Hampshire that burn wood, wood residue, any coal-fired plant is a potential market?
And we've actually, we've actually tested in facilities in Indiana, coal-fired plants, where they've done the feed tests as well as the, the burn tests there, Logan's Port, particularly in Indiana, burned several tons of our, of Ecotec.
Okay. And that's in, it can also be used in coal burning facilities that aren't particularly oriented toward producing electricity?
It's possible. We're looking at our, our market has been targeted to be primarily stoke-fired, smaller municipal institutions. Many of the colleges and universities still have coal-fired systems in place. That's our primary near-term market.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you be willing to share with us the costs or your price structure in terms of recycling and all the rest of this stuff?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Let me try this a different way. Let us assume for a moment we sign a contract with you tomorrow, and come March.
Perfect.
Come March, something dramatic happens and you can't finish your plant. What happens? Do you have a place to put this trash?
Yes, we do. We have multiple locations that we work with now. We have a very substantial transfer station capacity, both in Sandwich and in Rochester as well as in New Bedford.
Okay.
Will the price hold? Will the price hold if something like that happens?
Yes, it will.
And we have to do something different?
We will.
We're not going to get tabbed with more money?
No, you won't. We will build that into the contract. It'll be, it'll be cleared, clearly labeled in the contract that we would cover any additional costs for transportation.
Okay. Peter?
Has any town signed up for this yet?
Yes. Wellfleet and Mashpee hasn't signed yet, but they voted five-zero to sign with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other? Bob?
So, so the sixty dollars a ton is delivered in New Bedford or Rochester?
Rochester, to Rochester.
So we, because we continue to provide our own trucking?
Yes.
Okay.
And Link does a great job at that.
The only question, the, the contract, the draft contract you sent on September sixth, is that the one we should work from? Are there, are there amendments?
We're going to, we're going to add some information regarding the, this new C and D price to the contract, and we'll also add the recycling prices as well.
Okay. Thank you. Link, comments?
The board may not be aware, but we've been doing business with Mr. Camara, ABC, for quite some time. We've been doing business with Covanta for twenty-three-plus years. I'd say both companies, from an operational standpoint, have had excellent service to the town of Howard. When Covanta had the fire, they made provisions for us and everybody else to take our MSW. Because if the, there's a couple of things we need in life. We need water supply, and we need to be able to manage our MSW in an environmentally approved Mike had not informed me of this latest revelation of a cut in our C and D price. Currently, we have been paying seventy-five dollars for, geez, I don't know, the last five years or so. It's been fairly stable. I have hammered him and hammered him for over the last few months to ask if there was a break in it. We do approximately five thousand tons of C and D annually, so that's about a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in our tip fees if we were going with ABC in the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No, thank you. We appreciate the time.
Okay.
You're welcome.
He's going to take that left up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, their offer to see the operation is appreciated, and I assume there's an equal offer to, for us to come and tour the CMAS.
Of course.
Because I think we should, in doing due diligence, should check out both if we're going to check out one.
All right. Bob will, will arrange.
We can, we can get that arranged. Our process now would be, you've heard the presentations, there is some additional information that is needed, asked by the board. Once we receive that, then Mr. Hooper and I will try to put some type of a chart together, which you talked about several months ago, but we didn't have the information to do that. And then you can at least look, you have time. It certainly is not something you need to do right away, but I'd say probably by spring you'd want to be making some decisions on that.
And I'm assuming that both contracts will go through our town council?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
To give us any information that they deem important.
I would believe this time we'd be able to make changes in advance of you signing them.
That's not meant for you people.
Not meant for you guys. Referring to another contract that we signed.
All righty.
Great. Good. Thanks.
I'm looking for my agenda. I bought that.
Under old business.
We now move to new business. We have no old business, actually. And the subject is the South Howard Meeting House.
Can I have this back?
Yeah, no, I just have to find mine. There it is. I got it. It's the back end of it and there's the front end.
I usually, we travel with a big pile of pictures. It's easier than taking an hour to describe what we're doing.
Easel, or is that good?
Maybe, maybe for the other one.
Alan, you're, you're the poster girl, I mean, poster boy.
Yeah, that one stays together.
You have him pretty well trained. Congratulations.
He's good. Well, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to come back and, and make another, once again, report on our progress on the South Howard Meeting House. When I was collecting information to bring tonight, I realized that it was nearly almost ten years ago that I came before the board, and we sort of requested that maybe we have the opportunity to save the South Howard Meeting House. And it was, I think, met with a, deemed very unlikely that we would ever succeed at this. So I'm proud tonight that we can finally report that we're in the home stretch of the restoration process for this project. While we have found that true historic preservation cannot be accomplished quickly, which was a strong lesson for us, careful attention to the historical integrity of this building is producing a tremendous historic project for our community to appreciate for generations to come. I think upon completion, the South Howard Meeting House will be an award-winning preservation project. And I think we've been a great model for what can be accomplished when our town and community all work together, the various town boards and the community and our voters and the Board of Selectmen as well. First, we'd like to bring you up to date on where we're at with the project. Our pictures probably show you a lot of that if you check them out later. Phase one and phase two have been pretty much accomplished in our restoration project, and we are now just about completed with the complicated installation of all utilities, including septic, heating, electrical, air conditioning, plumbing, gas, full fire sprinkler system, and an elevator between the main floor and the basement reception level. All historic windows are ready for reinstallation, and the eighteen eighty-six restored chandelier is actually going to be delivered along with our restored sconces to the building and actually put in place in the next two weeks. Our electrician has actually donated a lifting arm, which will replace the old rope and pulley system in the attic, so the chandelier will be able to lift it and lower it in order to clean it and to access the bulbs and whatnot. We originally hoped that we'd be ready for a grand opening in two thousand and thirteen, but our fire sprinkler system became much more involved than we had planned. Not only is it far more expensive, for many reasons unavoidable, we found that if we didn't go with galvanized piping in the fire sprinkler system, that later on there would be a chance of sediment and problems with the, the rusting and whatnot on Cape Cod. And down the road, people would face problems with this building. So we went ahead and went ahead with the galvanized piping. Even though it's a higher cost, it's a much more long-term solution. And also, it is the entire building as well. Our elevator lift was complicated as well, and that it's been very difficult for this entire project to fit just about anything, as Alan would let you know. Anything never fit in the building. Because it was historic, we were within inches of, of a distance for the elevator going through the roof, or not making it to the second floor, or not having the distances for this and that. Fortunately, we've gotten by just about all of that now, and our elevator main lift is going to be delivered within the next month. It's totally complete, and the shaft is all ready for that. As I said, the chandeliers coming in. The fire sprinkler system is actually all in. They were going to do just the main pipe so we could do finishing of the walls inside, but they were able to finish the entire thing. So the only thing we're waiting on is a, a main six-inch water main that's going to be coming in. Bobby Howard's going to be putting in for us, going to the building. And that, the pipes are already on site. It's just a matter of putting that in, and that's our last digging, which is in itself a miracle. We're currently planning for meetings with the fire department to make sure we're meeting all, all compliance with fire code, safety, and all our ADA situations. We're going over all of that now. We have a new handicap door that is actually framed in the building, which has not cut through to the outside on the back right. And we're going to be, let's see, what's the rest of our thing here? Our opening pushed forward to two thousand and fourteen, and we're going to be having a major fundraiser in June of two thousand and fourteen to make up for some of our funding, hopefully. Secondly, we're here tonight to request our renewal of our license agreement, which is due for renewal on November the seventh. Our Board of Directors is confident that this agreement has worked well for us and for the town, and will carry us through the final stages of our restoration. And upon completion into the future, planning and operation of a program of cultural arts, education, and community use per our agreement in paragraph two under use purpose and term of our original lease. We are submitting our usual license agreement for your consideration, along with additional wording in bold type, which you will see, referring to establishing a joint policy for future community use. We hope that that would cover any questions on the program that are not established yet. We still have a lot of work to do on working out what that would be, since we're just finishing the restoration right now, and in hopes we would come back to the Board of Selectmen with a very detailed program and community use policy, and how the Selectmen would like to go forward from there. So I'll hand out a copy of those for your discussion.
So we haven't seen this yet?
No, ma'am.
Well, this, this actually is the original, this is the original lease that we've been operating on since the beginning.
Sure, which we have.
Which you have. The only difference is this little section of bold, which clears up the part that refers to program. And that's the only difference, other than the date and the change and the members of the Board of Selectmen.
Thanks.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
As part of that community use policy, I think we also need to address as part of those community use policies, who's going to pay for what, who's going to be responsible for what?
Pay for what? Meaning like, you mean maintenance of the building?
Like utilities and snow plowing and mowing the lawn.
That's all lined out really in our license agreement. Those costs have always been borne by the Friends of the South Howard Meeting House. It was our intention in the very beginning that we restore the building, and once the building's restored, into a condition that's, that's worthy of its National Register significance, we will then have it open to the, we will conduct a sort of a general cultural arts education and community use program. The lower, lower part of that paragraph really referred to, it's, it referred to the, oh, let me get the, let me get the lease, or I don't have mine. I gave up my own here. Throw me one, Alan. The bottom of that paragraph read, "Use policies will be established jointly by the Board of Selectmen and the Friends of the South Howard Meeting House." That really sort of referred to the community use policies. The program description expressed earlier per the commission report and the operation. So it basically allowed for the restoration and preservation per the commission's structural report, and the operation of a cultural arts, education, and community use program called the program upon completion of the process. And then the community use and the use policy was really referring to, once the building is done, a person comes in, they want to have a wedding, they want to have a funeral, a special event, you know? And we, we certainly foresee the town using the building frequently as well. So as far as us having exclusive use in, in that type of situation, we've always wanted it to be a town building and be used by far more than, than just us.
Can you tell me where in the existing lease or in this, with the revised paragraph, where it is?
It's in bold.
As to who is going to be paying the expenses, the heat, light, and power, once this is, building is restored?
It has always been under the Friends of the South Howard.
And it's?
It's in our current lease.
But where is it in this lease, paragraph-wise?
Let me see. It's not in that paragraph.
I know it's not in that paragraph.
But it is expressed in here somewhere.
Where? I'm just.
Let me see if I can find that.
I mean, I see improvements.
I know we've always, always paid all the expenses, the electricity, the alarm system, everything has all been taken.
So it must be under consideration, the payment of all costs and expenses associated with the exercise?
Yes.
So that's the paragraph? That's where you're referring to it?
Yes. Our, our intention in the beginning is that the, once the building was open, that with our organization fundraising for it, or people donating to our organization for it, we would eventually, and right away, actually, at this point, have the building be totally self-maintaining. And that has always been our position and our commitment, that we would, we would restore the building at no cost to the town, except for the CPC funding, which was designed for that purpose. And the rest of the time, it should totally self-maintain. And of course, that, that will bear out the first year, once we get it open, but that will not be until sometime in two thousand and fourteen. So it was our hope that we would, could renew our license now, keep that going, maybe for another four, another three years now, as it has been, and then come back to you with community use and details of the program when we get closer to the opening.
Any questions or comments?
I guess we, we at some point need to probably go into what the actual costs are in a little bit more detail. Obviously.
You mean the cost to run the building then?
Yeah, yeah. Heat and light and maintenance.
See, that's going to be real hard.
Custodial are, are clearly building-related. The question that I noticed that Linda mentioned was lawn mowing and, and snow plowing, you know? You're, you're in the middle of a, of a cemetery that has a new parking lot. Now, do, do, if they plow the snow because you're having an event that night, is that your cost, or do they plow the snow because it's a cemetery and people need to be able to park to go and visit their loved ones? I mean, we need to come to a conclusion on whose costs those sorts of things are.[1768.75] I mean, we need to come to a conclusion on whose costs those sorts of things are.
It's really hard at this point, since we haven't gotten the building open yet. We know the costs during construction, but we don't know the costs for heating yet. We don't, a lot of those things will be found out during the first year. But I strongly believe that if the building is operating properly and the operation schedule is set up properly, there will be enough funds coming in to do that and to maintain that building. And how the Selectmen would like to have those funds travel, that would be up for our discussion with you when we reach that point.
I don't think, I think that part of this discussion is not so much how much it's going to cost, but who is responsible for paying each of those bills? And I think that's got to be part of this, I understand program description and a use policy, but I also think that there has to be a lot more meat put to who's going to be responsible for what.
Is that not covered in there? The expenses, does not, does it not say that all the expenses are to be incurred?
It's a very blanket statement that...
So do you want that more defined?
Well, I think...
Well, for the short answer, yes. Because up to now, it's been the restoration of a building.
Right.
Once it turns over into a use building, I don't think we've talked about who gets the money for the rental of the facility. We haven't talked about, we haven't talked about any of that. We haven't talked about the mechanisms for that.
See, that would be the community use. Yeah.
Right, but it also, the revenue and expense side is not so much the community use, but who's going to collect the money, who's going to do the scheduling? There's a whole bunch of stuff that really needs to be very specifically detailed.
No, I agree.
And, you know, which insurance is, who's going to pay for what? So I would be looking for that to be extremely detailed, not just a one-line statement.
If you will, I'd like to make a comment. I think you're absolutely right, but I think it may have to come in two stages.
That's all fine with me.
A general stage here that says, the goal is to have the building self-sustaining.
And finished. Yeah.
When it's open. And then, in another couple of months or a year, when you get to a point where you know what you have, what Linda's asking for is absolutely necessary, by line, by line, by line. But until you get the building up and operating and understand how much the lights go, I don't think you can do it.
Well, you have, you have to have this in place before the building is operating.
That's why I'm saying you have the general one.
But so, and I would like to have as part of this, that, that discussion of who gets the, who's got their paws on the revenues and the expenses. I think that needs to be in this new license agreement, because we are getting closer to the facility being opened. And I know it's been a long haul, and it really does look beautiful. But now to go into the practical tin side of the operation, which is, I would like to see some words in this agreement that says that before, along with the community use policies, there will be established...
Financial policies.
The financial policies, financial and operational policies. You know, where's the money going, where's it coming from? If there isn't enough rental coming in, who's going to pick up the tab for the expenses? I mean, that has to be very clearly outlined, and that's our job as a fiduciary responsibility of this board, to make sure that that's very clear. So I'd like to see those words in here somehow.
Well, I think what we tried to do in that, in that new section was, the program description, which would include all of that, will be submitted to the Friends of the South Howard, or submitted by the Friends of the South Howard Meeting House to the Board of Selectmen for discussion and approval prior to the opening of the South Howard Meeting House. And the community use policies will be established jointly. That basically says, we're going to finish the building now, we're going to get the restoration done, we're going to come back to you before the building opens. We will iron out all those things. Right now, we're researching policies, use policies, that a person would sign when they were going to use it to protect the building that's a historic fabric at that point. And then we would go ahead with, you know, safety measures, what we're looking for for people to sign on to, what their responsibilities are, maybe what the rents would be. We're not at all concerned about handling that money. If that wants to go straight to the town, that's perfectly fine with us. We just want it set up properly, so that going forward after all this work, the building's protected, the town's protected, and we haven't done all of this for nothing. It's set up in a, in a very good way to go forward to maintain itself.
And I'm okay with all of that, because I think you're all, you're heading in the right direction. And you've got a whole, you know, you're understanding what it is you have to do. I hear the words protect and protect the facility itself. But I think I would just really like to see, you know, community use policies and financial policies. If we could just add those...
Do you want to give me a wording for that?
Sure. Community use policies and financial policies will be established jointly by Board of Selectmen and Friends. That would make me the happiest of campers.
That would be perfectly fine with us. And we'll do that, and we'll get in touch with you. I guess we should probably talk about the timeframe. If we know that we're going to open, say, in August of 2014, we should probably establish all of this, do you have a timeframe you'd like it done, like eight weeks ahead, or what's the timeframe?
Yes, because I think that, you know, if, if we get those policies or those proposals, you know, two days before opening. So I would say, if you're going to, planning in August, I think I, we probably would want to be seeing this in June as a first draft, so that we can noodle back and forth.
Or even sooner than that.
Or even sooner than that.
Sure.
Peter.
Can I suggest that maybe we just want to extend the current lease by, or license agreement by six months?
We could do that, too.
And then, at the end of that six-month period of time, you get all this fee and costs and whatever wrapped up, you get a new lease in place, it's clean, and you move forward.
It's not a bad idea either.
Yeah, what you might want to do is approve this with the word changes in, subject to the words.
Change the date.
Actually, I think Peter's right in that you just do it for six months.
And on the issue of the, of the, how do we put it? All costs and expenses associated with the exercise of the rights granted under number two consideration.
Let me see where you are, Ed.
Yeah. Part, you know, we need to spell out costs and expenses specifically.
Where are you, Ed, on?
Under considerations.
Under consideration, section two. Says that you guys are on the hook for all costs and expenses.
Yeah, well, this is the...
Question is, who decides who the costs and expenses are? I could decide, as a Board of Selectmen, that the costs and expenses are complete maintenance and upkeep of the parking lot. Not exactly sure is, if that really falls...
Well, the parking lot is technically not under the meeting house. The parking lot is technically on cemetery property.
Then you don't get to use the parking lot?
I think we use it, but it's also, it has cemetery use.
I know.
It's not on, it's not on our piece of property, is the thing.
There are some costs and expenses that we need to talk about, and you need to have them put down in concrete, so you're protected.
Okay.
That you're not, the town isn't looking you to pick up things that you don't feel are rightly.
Yeah.
I mean, you share some responsibility, but you don't carry all of it.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Just one quick comment, I, go ahead, Ed.
I'd move that we approve the license agreement as proposed for a six-month extension.
With the and financial policies added?
If you do only the six months, and we're not open in six months, we still are, we're still in the restoration phase. So a year might be better, because then we'd at least know we were going to be at that point.
Yeah, but I'd like it short enough so that you come back before you get to the point where you're, you're opening it up. Six months from now, you'll have a better idea of when you're going to open. And including the addition of, including the financial policies.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Community use policies and financial policies.
That's the second to that.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, just very briefly, I certainly applaud you and your committee for doing all this work. I think we're all trying to get to the same spot, though, is...
Oh, I completely agree. We want it, we want it set up properly as well. And the other thing we're working on is, we definitely want to get, by the time the building opens, get a preservation restriction on the building. Right now, we're trying to determine who would actually hold that. It cannot be us. We were thinking maybe, I was talking to Bob about that, maybe the, maybe the Cemetery Commission, I don't know what the Board's feeling is on that, but another board would have to, another independent group would have to hold, or maybe the Historical Commission, somebody would have to hold it, other than the Friends, obviously. But I think that's critical. I know a lot of towns require that. When they vote to purchase a property, they will put that in initially, and we don't have that. So that's an important protection.
Bobby?
Question on, on the first page where we have the date, November 7, 2016, do you, if you do six months, that's April?
April 7.
Did you, did you want to do June 30th? Do you want to do something?
Is it May?
Different? I just, just was concerned...
Yeah, do the end of the month. It just works.
Actually, why don't we do it June, June 30th?
It's just to see, you'd be over town meeting, and you could have a chance, and it can be before that, it can be before that, but you may not want to do it in the middle of town meeting.
We'll renew the license agreement till June 30th, 2014.
That's good, it ties it back to the fiscal year.
Okay. Is that okay?
That's right.
Maybe better for you.
Just a quick question. For a preservation restriction, does that have to go before town meeting? Is that something we would have to submit to go before town meeting vote? I'm not sure about that.
Check it out.
We can check it out.
I don't remember. Normally, the preservation restriction is part of, especially when there's a transfer of a deed, it's part of the transfer request as part of a grant. I think, the answer may be yes, but I'll, I'll check, only because on takings of land for conservation purposes, many times, you have to put the restriction in the article.
That's right.
So I can find out.
Would you, yeah, would you find out?
But primarily, the, the conservation restriction is put in, on the, on the one hand, so there is public protection, that that's, that it'll remain that, but also the restriction is required if there is any, for the seller to receive any tax advantage. In the case of the town, we're still holding it.
Sure.
There's, there's no, I know most of the preservation restrictions that I've seen have all been keyed to a private owner receiving tax benefits for doing restoration on their buildings.
See, I thought public buildings did that as well, in, just down the road, future protection. But maybe I'm wrong.
I don't know, but we'll look into it, yeah.
I'll find out.
Okay.
I, just making a comment before. A good financial discussion, but I think we're, I know I'm certainly interested in getting it listed enough, because we want to have a, an understanding of what our liability is, if you're unable to raise enough fees to operate the building once it is restored. And so, that's, that's an important aspect for me to better understand that.
Well, we're fundraising for the building as well. I think there will be a lot of, a lot of revenues coming in for it. There will be a, a, a community use program where people will come in and use it. I could foresee someone using it on, which is part of our discussion, maybe someone might use it on a weekly basis, someone might use it on a monthly basis, someone might use it for a special event, or a wedding, or a funeral, or any other special, you know, government reenactment, whatever. But down the road, those fees will come in. Our organization will stay intact and continue to raise funds for it as well. I think our hope is, like, for instance, we have, we've received a phenomenal bequest from a gentleman who was a member of ours for, since we started, really. And his hope was that he would make it through and see the building finished. He did not, but he left us a $20,000 bequest, which we're expecting any time. And in the end, I think that probably will put us over to finishing. Of course, he would not know that now. But I think down the road, if our organization is set up that way, and a large bequest came in, we'd put it into a fund where all those, all those, you know, all the money raised from that to the future would go back to maintain the building. And I think eventually, it will reach a point where it will be very secure. And have several different sources of funding.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
As I understand it, it is a listed property on the registry.
Oh, it's, oh, it's on the National Historic Register, yes.
Already is.
It has been since 1996.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, thanks to Rufus Walker.
Yeah.
And the Historical Commission.
I also know of a...
It's on the state register as well. And the cemetery is actually on the registers as well.
I know of a community radio station that is patiently awaiting the time when they can approach to rent it for a small musical.
It's going to be phenomenal. We have a person who's donating time to do a, a sound survey for us. It's all going to be, our electrician's willing to wire it all. So it's going to be totally, totally, completely amazing venue for a performance. It's going to have phenomenal sound with wood floors, and it will seat upwards of 250 in the main floor, and then have just a wonderful reception area downstairs, which is actually all framed, for a limited-use kitchen and two bathrooms, a handicap bathroom, and a small performance stage in the basement as well. So it will have like a more intimate setting in the basement. Beautiful, beautiful basement space for us as well, and a wonderful stairway that goes between the two. So I think you'll be surprised when you eventually see it.
Any other comments? If not, we should have a vote. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
One question, do you want me to make those changes on this and give it back to you? Or do you want to make the changes and give it to us, or?
Well, I don't, do we have it electronically at this point?
I don't think I have it electronic. It's easier, I think it's just a couple of words in the, in item one, adding and financial policies, and then changing November 7, 2016 to June 30, 2014. I believe at this time, those are the only changes.
So I, I'll make those, Bob, and just give them to you, and then...
And we'll have it on the consent agenda you will sign next week.
And we'll, we'll sign it on our end, and then, and give it to you, and then we can get a copy.
Great.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work. We now move to the Muddy Creek situation. Larry?
Cal Ridley's, you can leave now, leave for the pictures. Cal Ridley, as I mentioned last meeting, played a major role in securing our grant for $3.3 million from Muddy Creek. She's been coordinating the activities with us, Bob Caprall, the committee, and Chatham. Working on a, basically, an hourly contract, which is, which is run out. And so the purpose of this is to renew that contract. And we have that in place, Bob has, we have funding, a source of funds for that. Email, Carol emailed me today and asked if she should be here tonight, and I first said no, which may have been the better response, because we don't have a lot of discussion. But then, on second thought, I emailed her back, and I thought, Carol, if you could give us just a very short summary of, I think we know where we've been, but maybe just what the next steps are.
Sure.
And thanks again for your help on the, on the grant.
Well, thank you, and, and really, it's been a remarkable team effort, and we owe a real debt of thanks to the Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration, and Jeremy Bell, and the folks at U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So, so that is, just to start off, I think that is the biggest news, is the 3.3 million in funding. And the real reason for this is that the restoration of the 56 acres of wetlands is going to enhance the resiliency of the system for coastal storm damage. That's the, the nature of the funding from the Department of Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Certainly, the fact that the project was moving along so well, and really a go, really put us in, you know, in the front of the line for that funding, no question about it. So that was really the work of many, many people. One important thing, though, good news, no match requirement. Some of the other funding opportunities that I'd come before you to discuss had 25% or other percent match requirements. This has none, so it's just the 3.3 million. That figure is our estimated construction cost as of today, according to CDR Maguire. That number does not include relocation of utilities, which we are working with NSTAR to estimate. They are first looking at the estimation of relocating above ground. We've had inquiries at our public meeting a couple weeks ago, interest in looking at the potential of putting the utilities underground, so we are exploring that as well. So we will have more information for you in the near term on what those relative costs are. But that is not included, either way, that's not included in the 3.3 million. So, and the 3.3 million is an estimate, which, you know, as we get closer to final design, could change potentially. We're not expecting any major changes, but one never knows. So that's all a way to say, we may need to bring to you some form of article for town meeting for additional appropriation. we may need to bring to you some form of article for town meeting for additional appropriation to cover costs such as utility relocation, and any other costs that may arise between now and final design. So, we're, we're close to the finish line on funding, but I just wanted to put that out there as well. And we have a team meeting, um, this week, as a matter of fact, and, um, you know, we're continuing to, you know, get a handle on, on design issues and, and costs associated with them. On October twenty-fourth, we presented the twenty-five percent design at a public meeting, which was, um, you know, pretty well attended. There's still a great deal of interest in the project, and, and, um, strong support, really, for it. We anticipate seventy-five percent design being completed by the end of this calendar year. Uh, we would expect, or the current schedule is for final design and permitting to be wrapped up, you know, in the winter-spring timeframe, you know, toward the end of the first quarter of two thousand and fourteen. So, before town meeting, you know, really ramps up, we would have a real clear idea on costs at that point. Best case, of course, this is all best case. And, so the schedule would be wrapping up the design in the first quarter, um, any town meeting appropriations in the spring, going out to bid in the summer, and ideally, commencing construction after Labor Day, um, two thousand and fourteen. So, construction would occur, the heaviest part of it, after Labor Day and before Memorial Day of two thousand and fifteen. We anticipate at this point, a six-week road closure, which would be a complete road closure with a detour. The, uh, approach that's being taken in the, in the design process is accelerated bridge construction, where prefabricated sections of the bridge are brought to the site and assembled. This saves a lot of time, and therefore, a lot of money, but it does require the bridge to be actually closed for a period of time. So, that's a little bit of a trade-off there, but we felt the balance of, of saving time and money was, was pretty significant there. So, those are the broad outlines. I don't know if there are any specific questions on issues, or?
Can somebody refresh my memory as to how much money we've already had through town meeting articles? Something came through CPC, and didn't we have another straight town meeting article? And I just, you know, refreshed my memory.
I don't recall CPC, but I think the, uh, uh, design is, uh, was three hundred thousand dollars approximately in total, between us and Chatham to do the engineering?
That's roughly the amount of the contract, but you had allocated more than that.
Yeah.
I think, I think the total allocation, you know, you're splitting everything with Chatham fifty-fifty, so I think...
Two twenty-five comes to mind.
That's correct.
So, that's what we spent for the design?
Well, that's, that's what you allocated.
Allocated, yeah.
You're, so far, we're, we're well, well below that.
Yeah.
And that's outside of the three point three million.
Right, right, right.
Right.
That's, I was just trying to remember.
Yep.
Two twenty-five was floating in my mind, but I didn't know if that was the right number.
That's the number, yep.
Ed?
Was that, I can't remember, was that done, was done by an article at town meeting, was it also done at, at a ballot? With an override?
I don't recall the ballot.
Or was it all done out of free cash?
I think it was all done by a free cash.
Don't recall.
I don't recall.
It was a, it was, I, I think, um, it was a use of CPC funds, so...
It was, it was CPC.
Yeah, I think, I think there actually was a ballot question.
That's right.
Yeah.
It was CPC.
Well, if it was CPC funds, then there wouldn't have been a ballot.
There wouldn't have been, okay. That I actually don't recall, but it was CPC funds.
It was CPC funds, because there was, uh, some...
Presumably, um, the costs that
I've forgotten.
you've indicated may be over what the grant amount is, are the undergrounding, it'll be potentially the utilities. And I don't know what other things you had mentioned might, uh, be above and beyond, uh, the three point three million. Those are the sorts of things that we'd need to have identified, uh, certainly, uh, by March, so we can, uh, prepare an article for town meeting, and a potential ballot question, depending on
And that should fit our, and that should fit, fit our schedule.
Because, at this point, it's past the deadline of, in putting it in as this, an additional CPC article.
Right, so I, I, I think, um, you know, as Larry mentioned, I think, I think that, you know, we, we've been mindful of that right along, before we knew the good news of the three point three million, we, we thought we'd be going to town meetings with a larger number request. So, this, this schedule will allow us to know with much more clarity what that number would be. And, you know, if you're familiar with, with estimating, as many of you are, um, at this stage, the estimate includes a very large contingency number. As you get further into the design phase, that, that contingency gets smaller as you know more clearly what your costs are going to be. So, I'm not suggesting that we're expecting any, you know, big variances from that three point three million, other than the utilities, which we know are not included in that cost. But, one never knows, so I just, you know, want to leave that open.
You know, there, uh, there's always, or not always, there's some public pressure, for instance, to bury the utilities rather than, than put them above ground, which we don't know for reasons I won't go into for the NSTAR, but...
I'm not the only one who's aggravated with NSTAR, we all are.
But we all know what the estimate of that is. There's some public pressure for, uh, sidewalks extending from the bridge. Right now, it's all focused on the bridge, and that's a state road, but I don't think we'll go that way, but we all know. Mainly, what I wanted to comment on, Carol, was, uh, you know, we're extending Carol's con- contract as, as coordination. We spent money on talking about the grant, but what Carol's been doing is coordinating between, uh, a team of, uh, Chatham and Harwich people that work together, uh, with Bob Cafrelli, and, uh, is providing the, uh, law of our engineering expertise. But, uh, I don't know, around ten different regulatory agencies, they all have an input into this. We live in a regulated world in Massachusetts, we live in a heavily regulated world, and just get all those involved, and, and, and they've all been helpful to the process, but they've also taken a lot of time. You know, we get responses from Coast Guard, for instance, whether it's, it's been difficult, uh, you know, uh, and all the others, you, you name them, so that's, it's been taking a lot of time to get that, you know, probably increase some as we get closer to the design phase. We still have some, uh, hydrology issues that have to be sorted out. So, that's a reason for, uh, using Carol in this role to help us pull it together.
I think it makes sense.
I just wanted to explain that.
I think it makes sense, because, yes, the, I, I'm sure that there is a great deal of coordination back and forth, and just getting this thing moving, and everybody moving in the right direction, I, yeah, I, I can believe a lot of coordination.
Mr. Chair. Do you have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment. As we've been getting the emails back and forth about the Bank Street area
Yeah.
and that conservation area, and what might be done there, um, I think the experience that Carol's developed with this project may, maybe require, if you will, her support on that one also, so, and that's down the road, but I, but I think it's the same kind of activity.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, just one comment is, you mentioned the issue of sidewalks, and, and, you know, I think, uh, as I understand it, there'll be side wa-
On the bridge?
On the bridge, but there ought to be some way to get to that. I think it'll be an attractive place for people to walk, to view from, and, uh, to have them stumbling along the edge of traffic unprotected is probably not the best idea. That being said, uh, we have a, an, uh, agreement for consulting services in front of us, and I'd move that we approve the agreement for cultural consulting services between the Town of Harwich and Ridley and Associates for, uh, services on coordination of the Monamoy River Bridge project.
Second?
And
Muddy Ridge.
Muddy River?
Muddy River.
Whatever.
Muddy Creek.
Muddy Creek.
That's right, whatever it's called.
Whatever it's called.
Bridge project, uh, the, uh, hourly rate of a hundred and ten dollars for two hundred hours.
Second.
There was a second, oh, yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
Let's change the date to be the right date.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And thank you, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may just add one other point, um, to add this comment.
Before you add that, Ed, did you have this part of your motion, that the town administrator was going to be authorized to sign this?
Sure.
I think you did.
Can we?
I think, I heard, I heard that.
I just want to make sure that it's part of the clarified. I didn't hear that.
What about you, Peter? I did.
Sorry, Carol.
No, no problem. Just, just on the question of the, the sidewalk issue, because it is, it's, it's an important issue, and it comes up in almost all of our public meetings, um, a couple of things. One is that even though Mass DOT is not paying for this bridge, we have to abide by their standards and regulations, and so on and so forth. They are requiring the sidewalk on the bridge, um, which is going to be on the north side, which actually is the, the side that faces the bay. Right now, the, um, the limit of work for the project is just the bridge. So, we are not envisioning any improvements to Route twenty-eight on either side of the bridge, sidewalk or otherwise. That's the current project. So, um, I think if, if your direction is different from that, that's something we need to know sooner rather than later, and that would have an impact on cost and overall project, you know, budget. Right now, it's just the bridge.
And there would be a ch- significant change in scope?
Well, if I may, if, if you're, if you're also considering undergrounding the utilities, you will probably extend past just the bridge, uh, in, in doing that undergrounding work.
We have not, um, and this again gets to how NSTAR does business.
Yeah.
They will only look at one engineering question at a time. So, the first question we have put to them has been the relocation of the above-ground poles. So, that's what they're looking at and estimating for us and figuring that all out. We can then, after they answer that question, we can ask them the question about engineering for undergrounding. And then we would have a clearer response to that
Sure.
that point.
You know, but if you certainly do ex- extend the project further afield, uh, than the, the bridge itself, because of, uh, doing an under- undergrounding, including that, uh, I think it's, it would be appropriate to consider, in that expanded area, pedestrian facilities.
Peter?
Carol, can I ask, um, are you, the state and NSTAR, assuming that the utilities at least go under the bridge deck somewhere, as opposed to flying over? Cause I keep hearing about overhead versus underground. Under the bridge is not underground, it's under the bridge.
Well, correct, for, for the, for the span of the bridge, right.
It's in the bridge.
There'd be, there'd be like a little conduit under there, right? They would go under.
Yeah, and so now, they just probably say, got a riser pole on both sides, or both ends, and off they go.
Right, and, and in fact, because of the utilities, the, um, gas line will actually go under, under there.
Right.
So, that, there's already that happening, but it's a question of what's going to happen with the wires.
Mm-hmm, okay.
How about, how about Comcast?
They are in the mix as well.
Okay.
So, they're coordinating, but it's NSTAR's control of the poles, and they're sort of driving the, the boat.
I mean, I, I would suggest, maybe done it already, when you talk about sidewalks, you gotta at least look at that area and say, what makes sense? I mean, you could say, I'm gonna add five feet of sidewalks, or five miles of sidewalks, they gotta go somewhere.
And we have had that discussion, it's not only costs, it's, uh, you know, we're environmentally sensitive areas. How much room do we have for sidewalks on the bridge? In my mind, I have a question about how far do you put sidewalks before you get into safety concerns? Because that's a dangerous road, you know, you come down a hill and they're curved, and you want people, uh, uh, walking there, so there's, there's cost, but we, and we have had a lot of those discussions. My point was, is that if still, and we'll have more discussions, because there's interest in it. But I, I can argue against it, I can argue for it, depending on how I feel today.
It's got to be a destination.
Well...
Right, there's got to be a destination to it, you can't just extend the sidewalks and have them go nowhere.
Yeah, but, yeah, what you do have on either side is a parking lot and a beach, one for Harwich and one for Chatham. And it, they're not very far from, from that, that bridge at all. You're dealing with yards rather than miles.
But it would, it would seem like you need to spec it out, because we could sit here and talk about this forever, but it needs to be specked out, it needs to be seen what the cost is, because we have to go back to town meeting and look for more money. You know, you start putting that into the mix, too.
It's being discussed.
Yes, I mean, and, and I can bring this feed, we have our, our team meeting with, um, the engineers this week, so I can bring this feedback to the meeting, and we can, we can discuss this further, and perhaps giving, give you a little bit more specificity on what rough costs might be, and other considerations that might be associated with that.
Thank you, Carol.
All I wanted to express was, you know, as the, the process moves forward, my druthers that, uh, that be looked at seriously, rather than, you know, just sort of say, uh, have a cursory look at and, and dismissed. I think we need to seriously look at it before we make a decision.
Okay.
Link's involvement might be important because of his sidewalk fund also. Thank you, Carol.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we now move on to, um, excuse me, the Hall of, Hall of Fame nominees. We have two of them. Is there any discussion, or questions, or comments, or does someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept as Harwich Hall of Fame nominees, Ray Jefferson and Bob Murray.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Welcome addition, I shouldn't say welcome, appropriate additions.
Appropriate, yeah.
Yeah.
Well deserved.
If there's no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We do need, however, as I recall, some pictures and other stuff have
Yeah.
You have everything, uh, of Bob Murray.
But, before I contacted the family for that, I wanted to make sure that it was going to be acceptable.
Absolutely, we understand.
And we have a picture of Bob Murray, was already given.
I saw the Bob Murray one, which I thought, by the way
It's a great picture of him.
It's a great picture of Bob. He would have picked something like that.
Yes, he would.
Now we move to the town administrator's report.
Just two quick updates, Mr. Chairman, um, some good news. The, John Rendon this morning told me that the Whichmer Pier and Bulkhead Replacement Project is back on the agenda for the state, and it's gone so far as that they are asking that he attend a meeting this Thursday in Gloucester to make a presentation, so there may be more to come on this. This is a project that would fund, uh, one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars for the, uh, Bulkhead and Pier project. Our share would be four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that would obviously require a town meeting action. The second item is an update we received from the county through the Cape Cod Commission, information regarding a, lack of a better word, a flyover of the Cape to produce mapping for assessors, water department, et cetera. Part of their project to do it countywide would mean that the Town of Harwich would only have to contribute, uh, four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. My proposal is, and I've talked to the water department, and also the assessors, that we would pick that up as part of their budget now. We have to make a commitment by the end of this month, if I remember so. I'm proposing that we, at least since I have a funding source, that I sign it unless there's an objection, objection. I believe so, especially since the county commissioners voted, uh, two hundred thousand dollars from county funds to supplement the total project, so the total project cost is one million, or just over one million dollars.
Do you recall when we've had a flyover before?
I don't. I asked the assessors and the water department. In the past, they have used some, uh, flyover material, for lack of a better word, that was done by NSTAR, and they were able to then take that data and then convert it. What this, the advantage of this program is that the town will own the data.
Yeah, I don't recall, that's why I was asking, the Pleasant, uh...
I don't know the date, but I, I think it's been at least five to ten years.
Cause Chatham's done flyovers, I think, twice in the last eight years or so, but the
Orleans?
Pleasant Bay, uh, area.
Orleans was the, was the most recent town that completed a planometric survey, and I believe that was done a year and a half ago. They may still be participating, because it's, it's better data.
Yeah.
But I think the key is that, that the town would own the data, and that, that's really critical when you try to do different things with this, with the, uh, digitized material. So, there would be another cost to produce the maps, but again, that would be, uh, spread throughout the departments who are going to use it. It might include planning at that point, to produce the map. Planning, water... Planning, water, assessors, possibly some... Possibly because there are a lot of conservation areas that it'd be great to have good maps. So, I've submitted to the various departments the fact sheet from Mass Ortho, and I cannot pronounce Massachusetts Ortho Imagery Consortium. I did say it. So, they, they have the details on what level the, the pictures would be taken, et cetera, and how it's converted. So, the water department and assessors are looking at that now. Thank you.
Well, just a comment on that, that project. I do know that when it came to the county commissioners, it caught the eye of our resident county commissioner who spent a fair amount of time questioning everybody whether or not this was necessary, whether existing resources could be patched together and used, and hated doing it, but finally concluded that it was actually a worthwhile project to have a new, a new comprehensive set done.
No, I agree, it's very worthwhile. I, I thought at one of the MMA meetings we were at, I heard a discussion from someone in the state government that they were going to pick this up, but that obviously didn't happen.
I don't believe so. I, I think some towns have also talked with the MMR, the, I call it, still call it Otis. They do a flyover, but I think one goal of the, of the county, Cape Cod Commission was to see if they would participate in this, thus driving the cost down even further, if that's possible.
But this is pretty reasonable for us, though, I mean...
Really is a very cheap price for what we're going to get, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Selectmen's report, sorry, selectmen's report? Anything?
Just a question. I'm assuming on this Monday, November 11th at 11 o'clock, we're having a veterans observance?
At the flagpole.
Okay.
I'll ask...
Because I hadn't seen it advertised.
I'll ask, well, he did talk with me, but I have seen nothing in writing. I'll get something.
It is, I have the Farquhar Nation. So, I know it's at 11 o'clock and it's by the flagpole in Island Pond Cemetery.
Okay, well, I'll... I'll get that confirmed.
Yes.
Is town hall?
No.
Is town hall shut down there?
Yes, sir. It is a holiday.
Our meeting next week will be Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Our meeting's actually going to be on Tuesday. Anything else?
We do need to meet, unfortunately.
Just, just, in keeping with the, the lady who suggested that we do some outreach on this November 18th meeting, can we make sure that we put it front and center on our website? And...
Yes.
You know, is there a possibility that we can use the reverse call system from the water department to just put it on people's answering machines? To just get a...
I think it's a good idea.
Just to do some of those things?
I'll take care of that.
Because I, because I think that the, you know, the reverse, the robo-call thing is inexpensive to do. And I think that at that point, we've let as many people, we've been talking about it now for a couple of weeks with that date, so...
Well, the presentation that was done at the high school cafeteria, that was put on the reverse call also.
I'll ask him to repeat that.
We ain't going to need to go into executive session for probably five minutes or so. So, I guess the appropriate thing to do would be to adjourn and then move to the executive.
No, I think you need to vote while you're in session. Your only determination, do you wish to return to open session afterwards or not?
I don't believe so.
Let me just adjust the motion, then.
Okay, can we adjust the emotion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Paring 2, to conduct starter sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding town administrator contract and not return to open session.
Second.
Larry? Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you all.